Good evening, committee. I'm doing well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So tonight, as an update, just want to bring your attention to a few things. Home construction is beginning in Leighton Hall. This is the development that's the end of Green Street and Murray Drive. There'll be ninety-nine townhomes that they're building there. Ryan Holmes is the builder for that community. Phase three has begun in Parkland, which is a community located off of Ridge Road in La Balle Circle. This will be the last phase of that project, and it consists of seventy townhomes. Stanley Martin is the builder for that project. We've issued building permits for Metro Connects to start building their buildings. You've seen a lot of grading work taking place over there at West Butler Road. So they've now got their building permits on hand to start going vertical. So that's exciting for them. The YMCA on Brookwood Point Place has got their building permit for an addition that they're doing. That's going to include a new gymnasium, some storage, some classrooms, and a couple of offices. We had a restaurant that is moving into ten ninety-nine East Butler Road. They completed their work. It's called, and I don't know if I'm going to say this correctly, but Ari Su, ten ninety-nine, where they will provide beloved Korean soul food. And also, just to, you might be interested to know that that Moretti's Pizzeria and Bar is under new ownership. They've gone through a lot of work cleaning up that restaurant. So hopefully you get a chance to check them out if you haven't been there for a while and maybe be impressed. And we welcome some new businesses into the city that have opened their doors during the month of March, including Furniture and More Wholesale, Greenville Restoration, Old Mill Kitchen and Commensary, and Rare Diamonds Academy. And that's the report I have from our department for you this month. And lastly, as far as the comprehensive plan efforts, wanted to let you know that on April twenty-fourth, that there will be a drop-in meeting for the public that they're invited to, to learn more about that process and to provide input to our consultant who is working on that comprehensive plan. That will be at the Senior Center on April twenty-fourth in the evening. If you have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Good. I think we're good. Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to unfinished business. We have none. New business. The first one here is an ordinance to amend section ten sixteen Religious Institutions and allowing childcare preschool and after-school activities.
All right, I'll take it away. Really, just kind of the short of this is we have some churches that operate preschool programs within the city. And at another church recently, who asked about doing the same and/or at least providing a daycare program. And as we looked into the ordinances and kind of figured out, can they do it? We found out that, oh, wow, really? They can't. And in fact, we found out that some of the ones that are operating, I'm not quite sure how they were allowed. Maybe the grandfathered in from some time long ago, but if they were asked today too, the answer for them would be also no. So we saw this as an opportunity to look at amending the ordinance to both allow practice that already exists, but also making sure that other churches have the opportunity to run preschool and after care, after school and daycare at their facilities as well. So that's what's before you tonight is an ordinance that establishes childcare, preschool, and after-school activities as a permissible accessory use to religious institutions. This went before the Planning Commission at the end of March, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of this ordinance.
Questions? Is there a reason why we say minimum of two acres?
It's something we find typical in our ordinance for a lot of different things, actually. I'm not quite sure what's so magical, to be honest with you, about two acres. But even with churches, we have different conditional standards that are associated with churches. And there's a certain tier that comes along with being two acres. And so that's where it came from. We could easily do without, but but it's just kind of something we've pulled from some other sections of our ordinance.
Okay. So have you ever run into situations where anyone comes and challenges and says, hey, we're under two acres?
Haven't had that yet. It's not to say it couldn't come.
Okay. Well, it's just one of those things. If it's not necessary, why put it in there unless we can figure out a reason why? That's all I've got.
To Matt? I mean, I would echo if we have, you have all the other requirements around the parking and traffic flow and things like that so much. I guess I'm in the same boat as him. I just don't know why it's there.
And you certainly could recommend approval of an ordinance with that standard stricken.
Yeah. We can do that. The other thing I think is important to note, which was in our packet and is something that is, I think, an ongoing issue in our community, but I think pretty much in every other community is the lack of childcare. So I mean, I think for us to recognize that and to do what we can to help facilitate more child childcare options for working families, to me, it makes a lot of sense. I don't have any other comments.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we forward this to council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, hearing none? All right. The next is an ordinance to amend section ten thirty-five on packaged alcohol beverage store and clarification of the application separation requirements.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So kind of the brief summary of this one as well is also it came about through an inquiry from somebody who's looking to open a business, a wine store here in the city of Malden. And as we were going through the ordinance and trying to figure out where they could locate, we came evident that our ordinance is a little overly restrictive in this area. In fact, we couldn't find anywhere that met the criteria that we put in place, which is that have to be at least three hundred feet from any residence, measured property to property line to property line. And so brought this up to the Planning Commission last, last month as well, and talked through some couple of different approaches on how we can amend this in an appropriate way. And, and where the Planning Commission settled on with this and also came by way of advisement from the city attorney was to just change the way that we, the method of measurement that we use. Instead of, as it's written in the ordinance right now, where we measure from property line to property line, to use the method that's outlined in the state law as it pertains to the separation of these types of stores from schools, churches, and playgrounds. And so the way that the state ordinance or state law provides for that method of measurement is from the business entrance to the premise of that church, school, or playground. And so the proposal in this ordinance is to adopt that same method for how we measure to a residence from the business entrance to the premise of nearby adjacent residents. This also went to the Planning Commission, like I said. And there were a few residents from the Metalwood Community happened to be attending that meeting as well and spoke about it and expressed some opposition about having a liquor store close to a neighborhood. And so I think after kind of talking through this with the Planning Commission, I saw that the method that's prescribed in the ordinance presented to you tonight would be a little bit more appropriate approach than where we first started when we started the evening, which was we were considering exempting from the conditional standards in the ordinance for liquor stores that they didn't have to follow that separation distance if they were in a shopping center with multiple tenants. Using this alternative standard that's being presented to you tonight, we'd still have some level of protection there for neighborhoods, whether they're in a shopping center or not. There would still be a separation there, just changing the method of how we measure that. So Planning Commission has recommended approval of the ordinance that's being presented to you tonight. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have about it.
So my question would be, you talked about, I kind of, kind of what prompted this was we had someone wanting to open one of these businesses that would fall under this category. Basically, the way it's written now, they wouldn't be able to open a business, that business in our city limits. Is that?
Pretty much anywhere. Correct.
So does, how does this change? Does this change give them that ability then to open a business like that?
It does.
I'm good. Yes, sir.
This would not be the first establishment to sell alcohol in the city of Malden. So I'm wondering, is there any other establishment that currently sells alcohol in the city of Malden that is able to meet the current requirements?
No, we, we listed, I think, around four or so that are currently in the city, and all of them would not meet the current standard.
Chief Miller, I'm not going to put you on the spot tonight, but I would ask you to think about it because I, I will go ahead and support this to move forward to full council. But I would like your opinion. If you want to give it tonight, cool. If you'd rather wait a couple of weeks, but I'd like to know what law enforcement thinks about this change. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sir. All right. Have a unofficial motion here? What's the pleasure?
Move we forward it to full council.
Second.
Motion is second. All the, or sorry, any discussion? Any other discussion? Nope. All right, none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, hearing none, forward. Discussions.
All right, we got a couple of items, just if you have any thoughts you want to discuss about them. First one is about what I've called on the agenda here, micro livestock. And it's one of our more popular requests from people, from residents, asking to have micro livestock, and really, I'll say primarily chickens. We, we get that question once in a while more than most. And so right now, the way our ordinances are, we just don't really address it. It's not addressed much at all in the animal control ordinance or in the zoning ordinance. The only thing that really the zoning ordinance gets into is for stables for horses on certain property. But otherwise, it's largely silent on this type of issue. What I provided for you tonight is pulled from some of the different communities that neighbor us or nearby here in the upstate and kind of how they treat livestock and chickens. Handful of them do allow in particular chickens. But if I didn't list them on here in this chart, most of them, a lot of them still don't, don't really address them one way or the other. We also had recently an inquiry about beekeeping, and that was interesting to go through and look at other communities in the upstate. And I could not find a single one that had anything to say about bees, whether allowing them or prohibiting them, except for our own ordinance was, our animal control ordinance, which specifically prohibits them. So this is just for your discussion tonight. See if this is anything that you have interest in entertaining. I'm not putting this on the agenda necessarily because I'm trying to sway you to entertain this. But if this is something you wanted to direct staff to kind of work a little bit more on, we can. But again, just for your discussion tonight.
I'll go ahead and kick it off, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I know that I've had, I've had people ask me, you know, are chickens allowed? And when I've talked with Mr. Deerhog about it, he said, well, there's not a prohibition. So to me, it says if there's not a prohibition on it, then yes, they are allowed. I, I think that if we, if we take a look at adding chickens to the code of ordinances, it, it gives a clearer framework than we currently have outside of the, well, if it's not disallowed, then it's allowed. But, you know, I appreciate Mr. Deerhog bringing this to us because it's kind of like the accessory dwelling units that, that we're going to be looking at too, you know, that currently allowed on smaller pieces of property, but not on the larger pieces of property. So I think what, I think what David's trying to do is, you know, bring these issues in front of us to see if we can bring them into the code of ordinances where it makes sense and maybe fix some, some oversights in the past. So I, I think if, if we wanted to look at a potential ordinance that dealt with, I like the term micro livestock, I'd be all for taking a look.
Ditto. I mean, I have, I was told that they weren't allowed. Now, I wasn't told by a city official. I was told by people who had chickens who said they no longer could have chickens because they were told they couldn't have chickens. But that may have been because of noise ordinance or something of that nature. Because obviously, if they're, they're crowing at different times, that could be an issue. But I have no problem with micro livestock. I have no problems with bees either. So yeah, certainly, obviously, there's, there's, put some restrictions on it, but let's make it somewhat official so that we know what we're actually dealing with and not playing guesswork. So totally behind that.
This would likely be something we would address through the animal control ordinance. So if you are in kind of directing us to go ahead and start working a little bit on it, we'll, Mr. Duncan directs, otherwise we'll work with, on it with this committee.
Yeah, I guess. I think when I ran, I had no idea I'd be talking about chickens up here, but here we are. Fascinating.
You didn't know it was going to be such a big cluck.
Yeah, man. Yes, Mr. Duncan.
Mr. Chairman, just, just something to kind of keep in mind, we're more than happy to put something together. Many HOAs within the city do not allow certain livestock or micro livestock or any.
That would trump us anyway.
So this was, this was, this is where I was going to go with this is and my thought is, do we need to say anything about it? Because I, I think literally every HOA has something to say about it. And it's just, you know, if we don't do, we don't currently, do we need to at this point worry about it? To Mr. Duncan's point, you know, I can tell you, it'd be about ten minutes. I was getting a phone call from HOA if I had a chicken on my property. I mean, I don't. I don't know. It just, it seems like a lot of work for something that's pretty much regulated by the, by the neighborhoods themselves.
If your neighborhood has an HOA.
Right. And if it's.
There's a lot that don't.
And, and that's where, like with accessory dwelling units, it may come down to lot size. And in the larger residential areas, larger lot areas, R twenty or fifteen, it might make more sense, especially as some of our, our animal husbandry, like horses are out in our largest zoning areas or residential areas versus not in our smaller ones. So it may kind of boil down to that where.
That's a good point.
And then those larger lots wouldn't necessarily, most of them don't have HOAs. But there still could be a few, but yeah, just some things we'll work through.
Can you have small horses on small lots?
You might have.
Many horses.
Micro.
We probably do this too, like we do with short-term rentals, where we would have a requirement that it needs to be allowed by your HOA. So we certainly would not trump if an HOA has covenants and restrictions against something like this.
Yeah. I still try, I don't know. I'm mildly.
I'm good either way.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm maybe fifty-one percent disinterested.
Based on what you had seen from the other cities, were there, were there anyone particular that you wanted to look at replicating?
You know, it was interesting to look at the other cities. A lot of, some of the things were common throughout. In fact, it made me think that there was probably one that most of them were copying from. Which one is the egg before the chicken? I don't know. But, but there were definitely some common elements from the different cities that we looked at.
The city of Vanderson, I thought, was pretty comprehensive and gave clear kind of rules and guidelines that would be easily, easy for code enforcement to manage and, and monitor. Yeah, we'll, we'll work on something, bring it back.
Yeah, I would. The other comment I did have is, I have no, again, I don't understand why we would worry about beekeeping. At all. I mean, maybe certain lot sizes or things like that. And again, there's probably HOAs. So maybe to that point, we need to get into it a little bit, but, you know, I mean, I think bees are healthy for our environment and good for our good for the, I think it's good for the community to have a lot of bees. Although there's mosquito people out there doing a lot of damage, I think, too.
No, agreed. Yeah, it, really, I think it boils down to lot size and proximity from hive to neighbors. I think people.
Well, if I had one, I'd put it right on my property, no doubt.
There, there is some fear in the public of bees, but yes, I, I think that their benefit is without. We need those pollinators.
All right. I'm fifty-two percent worth looking at it, I guess, or whatever that's worth. But I'm just one of us.
You feel like you have a direction?
Yeah. Thank you. All right, and then. All right, and then me and Mr. Chairman, the next item for discussion, last item for discussion is about accessory dwelling units. And, and this by far is the most common request that we get. If we get requests ranging from people who are looking to add a place onto their home for a mother, mother-in-law, father, father-in-law, sometimes both. Or sometimes we get it from people who are looking at adding a place onto their lot for maybe their kids, one of their kids and their family to stay in. And sometimes we just get it from people who are interested in renting it out to someone that they can get some additional supplemental income. Again, with the last, just like with the last discussion item, I gave you a few examples of some communities who specifically regulate and allow that. Actually, this was not very many. There's far more communities who are allowing chickens than accessory dwelling units. But certainly, there's some, a couple of examples though, still to, to look at, such as just immediately north of us are our next door neighbor, city of Greenville. They permitted in all of their, their residential districts. And I get it. In the planning world right now, it is being offered as a solution to help with some of our housing crisis that we, housing shortage that we're facing in different areas of the country. And it's a relatively simple and cost-effective solution for helping out with that. But I also get that some place, people may not be interested in having additional neighbors right next door to them, and I get that concern as well. So bring this up to you again tonight, just to see if there's some discussion you want to have on this. And if there's any direction you want us to go with, with, with this, not necessarily advocating one way or the other. Just wanted to gauge your interest in it. Oh, and I, sorry, we kind of mentioned it, that during the last time, but I'll just say for the sake of everyone listening tonight, we do currently have some allowances for accessory dwellings, but it's primarily on our small lots and not on the larger lots. So it's a lot of people who look at that and review that claim, well, that's kind of backwards, isn't it? But that's how it is.
I mean, yeah, I, I, I think it's absolutely worth looking into. Probably no shock to any of you that know my background. I think, you know, I think the, what you mentioned from in terms of affordable housing, you know, does, has proven in some ways help with that. I think there's lots of good reasons to look at it. I think, I think it's a very valuable thing for us to take a look at and see if we can come up with some options. Again, my suspicion is there's a lot of HOAs out there that probably the newer ones at least that are starting to address those sort of things as well.
This one, you know, especially for older communities, they certainly do have a lot of ones who have things that address no chickens, no livestock, whatever. This one is a little less common in restrictive covenants.
I guess my, my biggest concern would be making sure, you know, one of the things is making sure in terms of like parking and things like that. You know, like, I know particularly in a neighborhood that I'm very familiar with, there's no ADU, but the lower half of a house was turned into basically a second house. And now there's, you know, it's a single-family dwelling, but there's more than one family living in there. So, and that creates some issues on the street. That would, that would be one of my big concerns, is making sure we're dealing with that.
I, I agree with you on, on that last part, because I know that I've had people in our subdivision come up to me and ask, you know, is there more than one family living in this house? Is there supposed to be more than one family living in this house? You know, I don't know that I would be as interested in taking a look at this if our ADU policy didn't already exist. And if it wasn't, as David said, backwards. That it's on smaller lots, not the larger lots, which could actually accommodate something like this. But I think that, you know, as our population continues to age, and we would like to be able to perhaps keep parents, grandparents, you know, out of assisted living and us be able to take care of them the way that they took care of us, that it might be nice to keep, you know, have, have something available. So I'm, again, aside from what an HOA might say, let's take a look and see what the city has, what the city can do and where it makes sense and where it doesn't.
So I got two thoughts. One's a question, and I'm going to direct it to you, Mr. Duncan. I know that at one point, the municipal association had a big, long discussion about Airbnb's and all of that. Do you know where that ever landed? I mean, is every city and municipality and county are just doing their own things? Or was there any sort of movement toward what to do with Airbnb rentals?
So, to make sure I answered the question properly. So are we looking at it from an allowance perspective or a revenue perspective?
Well, this, this obviously, one of the, one of the things positioned in here in terms of why one might consider doing this is to create a rental property.
Right.
In a sense. So, and I know that there was some, a lot of talk with the municipal association about what is allowed, what's not, what communities are allowing it, what's not. Myrtle Beach in particular being one. So I know I'm kind of throwing a curveball on a question that probably has absolutely no bearing whatsoever.
No, you're okay.
It's loosely based.
So, yeah, so there was a, there was a, a bill in the House, might have been the Senate, but bill in legislature that was looking to strip municipal authority and take any type of short-term rentals off of our, our, outside of our purview. And, and to make them allowable anywhere and everywhere. From my understanding, that bill never really moved forward. It got to a certain point, stalled out, died, whatever. Mr. Mattney may actually know more about that. Based on his day job. From a revenue standpoint, we pretty much are, I believe there's statewide agreements that allow certain entities are playing better and nicer with both Department of Revenue and Municipal Association. There was some conversations about information sharing between the big one. And so I, not as well versed in those conversations where they sit now. But the big issue that we were talking about last year was the legislature potentially stripping our ability to regulate short-term rentals, which would then allow short-term rentals anywhere and everywhere, and we could not do anything to stop it. So that did not go into effect, did not become law, so we don't have that issue. But we, when we identify an individual or a parcel that is being used as short-term for short-term rental, we do make sure we get a business license from the, the company that owns that. But then there are some statewide agreements on revenue. It's really, it really boils down to ATAX collections. And that, I'm just not as familiar right this second where that stands.
Thank you, I appreciate that. The other thing that I, I was just going to mention, I agree with what what two colleagues here have said as well. The only other thing that I would say is when we draft something or if we draft something is to consider, as we talked about before, parking, how do, how do we, is there a way to even draw that into the conversation with, if you're going to build a piece of, build something in addition to your home? The other side of it is, is just keeping in mind by, by building such a structure, you are building an impervious surface. So we would have additional stormwater issues that could potentially come as about with something like this. So what are some additional things that we can do to help mitigate, regulate? That's all I got.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, that brings us to our second public comment. Committee concerns?
I have none.
What do I hear in adjournment?
Move adjourned, second.
Question, none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those like sign? Right, we're adjourned. 6:30. Not always got these easy. Auto order the Public Works Committee, April the 7th. It is 6:33 PM. With the Mr. Reynolds and Ms. King, former city administrator, and Mr. Fleeman in the audience. First, is there any public comments? With that, we'll move on. What do I hear on reading approval minutes?
Motion to approve is submitted.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign, the ayes have it, they are approved. All right, reports of communication, city officers, Mr. Fleeman.
Man. Getting to the end of the ti, excuse me, end of the year, time where budgets are coming close across all the divisions within Public Works, we are where we need to be. We're cutting close on sanitation, and a lot of that is attributed to the landfill fees. But we're going to try to bring it in as close to possible as, as perfect. Aside from that, everything in Public Works is, is moving right along. We had a bit of inclement weather today for the first time, and I don't know if Seth has briefed you. There was some private infrastructure in Forrester Chase, which is in the backyards, that failed and caused ponding or flooding in the city roadway. So it's actually the first time where somebody else has messed up our stuff. So Public Works, we worked diligently to mitigate the flooding. We got the roads cleared, got the water off the roads. We're going to work with the homeowner tomorrow when things, because the yard, it was a lot, a lot of water. We're going to work to find a solution so this doesn't happen again. And just in case you were asking or wanted to know, we didn't even know these pipes were there. It was infrastructure that we just didn't know about, just in people's backyards that didn't exist, but it does.
Does somebody dig into it?
So apparently, the pipe separated according to the homeowner about a couple of years ago and had a sinkhole. And so there's what they decided to do, because they called AT&amp;T and Duke. There was a language barrier. But their solution was to just keep throwing stuff in the hole in their backyard. We, we fished out two boulders, about 30 brick pavers, 30. About six cinder blocks, a number of rocks. You know, you take a bag of sack crate and just kind of pour it, like, I don't know what you would call that, an amorphous blob of concrete, a number of those. And ultimately was, was blocking the drainage capacity of the pipe.
Okay. I don't know what to say on that. Questions on that?
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other, anything else?
No.
All I can think of is like one of those Y files things on YouTube or something, you know. Bottomless hole, keep throwing stuff into it.
I mean, it was, it was over on Sweetland. I can tell you where, where the, where the water was bonded. It was probably about three feet deep. I mean, a car couldn't pass.
I'm glad it was stormwater and not sewer.
We don't, we don't have that kind of problem with sewer.
He knows where those are.
I mean, if there's an open hole and they just start throwing stuff in.
That's, that's true.
Yeah, okay, all righty. I have another question for you. Anybody else? Good, okay. All right, move on to unfinished business. And which is none, new business, Loblawley Circle Aba, Batment.
Abandonment.
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 All right, so I, I'm not sure how familiar you are with Loblawley Circle. It's the Parkland Phase 1, 2, and 3 developments off of Ranch Road over by the off of Ranch Ridge, Ridge, off of Ridge Road over by the Mesa Soccer Fields. The, the intersection of Loblawley Circle and Ridge comes in probably at like a 30-degree angle. It's a very awkward design. The reason it was like that, there was just a couple trailers that were on that road that fed back to some county properties that are still populated. The developer purchased everything else, put in Parkland. Part of the original design was to cut in a new access off Ridge Highland, I think it's Highland, right? High Line Trail, and have that come in as a 90-degree angle and then have the upper part of Loblawley Circle just abandoned and turned over to be their common area. They finished Phase 1 and Phase 2. They have all the construction done. We've closed out Phase 1. We're working to close out Phase 2. There's a few signage and curbing things they need to address. And they're working in Phase 3 right now. The the abandonment, you know, was kind of, it went through the design, it went through Business and Development. We required the new access. There was infrastructure in the road that was gonna, that is to be abandoned. They had to relocate, like all the Greenville water lines. All the utilities have been relocated. But it's just a, a strip of, of road that's not going to get used anymore. So after speaking with the city attorney, this is abandonment is, is best done through a quitclaim deed. And we actually had to have an ordinance to execute, execute this quitclaim deed, and it is attached. So what I'm asking for you guys is to recommend the city council to approve the ordinance for the quitclaim deed, deed, and to abandon this section of roadway and turn it over to the developer of the Parkland subdivision. And if any of that was wrong, I blame him because he's the one who wrote this.
And just clarification, this is the, this isn't one of those awkward roads where we have half, county has half. This is the full road.
Yes.
Mr. Chair. May I go ahead and make a motion?
Yeah, I just wonder if I have any other questions, any? Here we go. Yeah, go right ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to forward to full counsel with the recommendation of approval. The Loblawley Circle right of way abandonment.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion?
I would just add that it would be in the form of an ordinance.
So we're handing this back over to the developer, what if, what if we didn't do anything?
Technically, it would still be ours, but it was kind of negotiated with the developer that they needed to cut a new road in, deed that to the city, and then we'd abandon them.
Part of the negotiation, I missed that piece.
One of the other good things about us turning back over to them is they'll go through the cost and the process to actually close it up and turn it back into grass or whatever they do with it.
Okay. All right, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign, the ayes have it, moves to full counsel. Right, public comment, any public comment? One online? All right. Committee concerns? What do I hear in adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it, or adjourned.
All right, looks like everybody's situated. I'll call our third and final committee meeting to order. It is 6:41 PM. This is Public Safety Committee Meeting. As my friend to the left would say, we're all here and accounted for. As my friend to the left would say, we're all here and accounted for. All committee members are present as well as everyone else. And you're all on the agenda tonight. All right, moving on to public comment. The and none, hearing none. Reading and approval of the minutes for March 3rd.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Allgood. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the minutes for March 3rd say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving right along to reports. We've got Fire Chief McCollum up first.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of committee. To give you an update, our budget is where it needs to be for the year. Like I said, we're winding down the end of it. I know I mentioned the last committee meeting that they had a burning ban out, which y'all know that's probably, that has been lifted with the whole state now, so that's good. We've actually ran 1,456 calls as of 6 o'clock tonight, so far. And it's just like I said, in April. Another good news is, the update is, we've got two, two new deputy fire marshals actually starting tomorrow. One's going to be in the city, and one's going to be in the districts, which will handle all the annual inspections. Yep. With the influx of everything coming in, that's going to be very beneficial for us.
Right. I know you've had some promotions and et cetera the last couple of weeks, so it's good to see.
That's in my report.
Any questions for our chief?
One little thing. I believe somebody, I just want to give a well-done, I believe it was your, our department, GE, they had to remove in the medical entrance to GE, they had a door that had been there, they had to reroute it because it didn't close the way it was supposed to in a fire. I'd seen that 30 years ago, never thought twice about it. They pointed out, I was like, of course. So I want to give that a shout out to whoever did that. To just say, well done, because I think everybody just ignored, didn't ignore it. They just didn't see it. So good ayes.
Yes, our power marshal.
All right. Thank you, chief. All right, then we'll have our administrative judge and clerk of court, Ms. Doreto, in her dual roles.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Just a couple small updates regarding budget. Budget's on target for this time of year. We are in the middle of our independent state audit that we got luckily drawn. We're in the second stage. We submitted our initial documents. We're now in, they're now pulling some other information that they want. I would say finance is fantastic, and it's been getting there. Information quicker than I can get mine, so I appreciate that. And also, it looks like next week, Public Works is going to be installing our new little permanent, semi-permanent wall in the jury room. If you've ever been in there, they kind of have that exposed equipment, HVAC equipment, and we've tried everything from curtains, screen, things. So I think next week we're on the schedule. So I appreciate that from Public Works as well.
Excellent. Any questions? All right, thank you. We'll see you back in a minute or two. All right, Chief Miller.
Mr. Allgood. We're doing good on the budget. We're right where we need to be. One of the, a couple of things I wanted to bring up was that Corporal Sevchik went to Columbia this week, or this past week for a meeting with the Special Olympics and receiving an award for the department. The car show, you know, she, the polar plunge, she did a fantastic job getting donations for that. This car show was just as big of a success as the, of the, as the polar plunge. I don't have the exact numbers on that, but they, I think they either doubled or tripled what they were actually trying to get. We had coffee with a cop this past week at Summer Moon. Would like to thank them for hosting us, and we had a great turnout for people coming out and just hanging out with police officers and talking to them. And also, National Night Out will be August the 5th. I think last year, the day after National Night Out, Madden started working on this one, so it's all your thing. So he's, he's working on making it bigger and better, so. But that's all I've got for right now.
Any questions for Chief Miller? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then we have, we have no unfinished business, so we'll move into the agenda items for new business. I think Judge Doreto, you're up first.
Tonight, I'm bringing you a revision to the current Malden Judge Appointment Ordinance. This basically will apply more for us, for our trial judges than our administrative judges, and I can kind of go into that a little bit further in our role and how we're structured and what I'm looking to do. Basically, what I'm trying to do is keep our ordinance more consistent with the state code. Currently, our ordinance reads, let me put my glasses on, that the city council shall appoint a lawyer of good and reputable standing who is a member of the South Carolina Bar as a municipal judge for the municipal court, and shall have at least two years' experience at the bar. Currently, the South Carolina Code does not mandate that magistrate or municipal judges be licensed attorneys per state code, so you have a lot of magistrates. I've heard up to 80% of magistrates are not currently licensed attorneys, and they're able to hear civil, criminal, and small claims. So what I'm looking to do is revise our ordinance to be more in line and more consistent for a couple reasons. I do feel there are a lot of good judges out there, judges that have a lot of experience, who may not hold the title as attorney but have been in that role for quite a while and are really good judges. It would also give us a little bit more flexibility in the department. You all would, of course, still have the ability to appoint those trial judges and make sure that their qualifications meet up to your standards before they would be able to sit the bench here. Currently, our administrative judges do not have that role, so as of right now, we can do certain functions, but we can't do all function. So whereas now, I could, you know, sign warrants and do bond hearings, but I couldn't sit on traffic cases, per se, on how we're structured here. So it's a little unique, I will say. There are very few municipalities that I know of in the state that are structured that way, very few. So I'm just looking to try to keep us a little bit more consistent, kind of give us the availability to perhaps appoint very qualified judges who right now would not be qualified.
Remind me, this falls in line with the, what we discussed during the budget process, how you're wanting to restructure the department. So this is another piece to that.
It is, it is, and it would give us a little bit more flexibility as far as placing judges. If there was an emergency, you know, we've had situations where a judge has a conflict, you know, they can't potentially be here, then we have people, you know, the public that are waiting, that's a little bit, you know, a situation like that. I'm also looking to just place judges where we can work a little bit more functionally with the police department, so we're not holding them up in different functions where they might need to get out and I might not be in the office, and just kind of make sure that we have all our bases covered on a 24/7 basis.
Are there any particular questions? Again, just to summarize, this is just another ordinance that needs to be updated and more in line with the state code to allow the department to work more efficiently. I would like to add real quick, could you, Chair with committee, that you have spoken, because I know that you ran this by legal counsel since, to see what...
I did. I've had conversations with our city attorney, and he's reviewed the ordinance, and he doesn't have any issue with it. I believe the other municipalities that he works with are in alignment with the same state code that we're looking to do here.
Mr. Allgood?
My only question was, the other part of this, as far as the ordinance goes, it talks about two, two years not to exceed four years. Is that also in alignment with what you're seeing with other municipalities?
It is.
That's all I've got.
Raylan? We'd like to make a motion to order the full council amendment and update of the Malden Municipal Court Judge Appointment Ordinance as stated below.
Thank you. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Allgood. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of forwarding the ordinance to full council, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Chief McCollum.
You're bringing back the 14 of a mutual aid agreement we do every year through Greenville County Fire Service Area. The only difference is that we don't, like, we do this every year. One thing that we did change in through the chief's thing, instead of doing it every year, if you look on page 13 of your packet, it went from January 1st of 2025 to December 31st of 2029. So we're going to do it five years, so it won't be coming every year, just like. So we just requesting just to...
Yes, someone who's sat up here for more than five years, yes, is in every year agreement that we have to renew. So any questions for chief before we move forward? Committee's pleasure.
Take a motion to forward to full council amendment to the memorandum of understanding with Greenville County Multi-Jurisdictional, Jurisdictional Drug Enforcement Task Force.
Wait, wrong.
Yep.
Wrong one.
Next one up.
We'll take that one too.
That one's a headish.
Save that for about three minutes. Yeah.
Sorry, I was going to say, I didn't, all right.
Page 11.
Sorry, wrong tab. All right. All right, this time, I'd like to send to full council a mutual aid agreement for Greenville County Fire Service.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Allgood, second. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of forwarding the mutual aid agreement with Greenville County Fire Service to full council, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, committee.
Thank you, chief. Now, we're moving on to...
Got my tag. Corners mixed up.
All right, I'll just give you a brief history of the, what I'm asking for. All law enforcement agencies in Greenville County participate in the Multi-Jurisdictional Task Force to disrupt illegal drug trafficking in our area. Ever, every municipality and sheriff's office has members on the team. In 2022, we amended the MOU. And then fast forward to 2025, the Department of Homeland Security is asking us to re-admit it because of the wording in it. And the wording, it says that all the monies obtained during the, the drug bust would be split equally between the agencies. The federal guidelines is that it has to go to the DEU. When we just, when we do not participate with the federal agencies, it's split evenly with the agencies inside of Greenville County. But for the DE, for the federal agency, it has to go directly to the DEU. They've been wondering why they hadn't been receiving the money, and that's what was holding them up, was they, they hadn't, because of the wording. And also, like I say, the proposed manpower, all the cities are going to be left the same except for Greenville City. They're going to go up one person in the, in the task force, and also Greenville County Sheriff's Office will be going up. Any questions?
Any questions, any, Mr. Craylon?
No questions.
All right, you're ready now.
I'm ready. I'd like to make a motion to move to full council the amendment to memorandum of understanding with Greenville County Multi-Jurisdictional Drug Enforcement Task Force, also known as the Greenville County Multi-Jurisdictional Drug Enforcement Unit.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second, Mr. Allgood. Any further questions? All right.
That's all I have.
Thank you, chief. Oh, wait.
We have to vote.
Yeah, we got to vote first. All those in favor, for to full council, the amended MOU with Greenville County Drug Enforcement Task Force, say aye. Motion carries unanimously.
That was all I got.
Mr. Craylon's rubbing off.
I know.
Here, I'm jumping ahead.
I speak for a living, so.
All right. Thank you. It's unusual that we have all three on the agenda in one committee, so that was nice. All right, back to public comment. Seeing none, committee concerns. Seeing none, hearing none. What do we have on adjournment?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we stand adjourned at 6:56.
I will call to order the city Malden Special Call, city council meeting on Monday, April 7th, 2025, at 6:58 PM. That the records reflect that all members of council are present and accounting for, along with our city administrator and our city clerk. Anyone online? We'd welcome you online watching. Also, next, on item on agenda is our Immacacious Pledge of Allegiance, that was Mr. ...
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bow with me. Gracious father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for how you continue to bless us daily. We thank you for interruptions that we can still get our business done here at the city. We thank you for the opportunity to serve our citizens, and we just ask that you lead us, that you guide us, that you direct us in our decisions that are before us. We just pray for emergency service workers for the city that you watch over them as they do the, as they go out and implement weather. And again, we just ask for your guidance in these decisions. You know, I pray, amen. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
The flag, United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and never ceases to draw.
Thank you, Reynolds. The, the only thing on our agenda is new business, and it appears both of them are very busy Economic Development Committee. Mr. Matney.
Thank you, Mayor. Move we enter executive session to discuss, to consider negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements regarding Bridgeway Station and economic development matters regarding City Center Village under 30-4-70A2.
A motion from Mr. Matney, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Allgood. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of motion for the executive session, as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none. The motion carries unanimous. We will stand into executive session, reconvene upstairs at 7:01. All right. Council has returned to chambers. Someone like to report out?
Thank you, Mayor. Coming out of executive session at 8:05 PM. No decisions were made, no votes were taken. Thank you, Mayor. Coming out of executive session at eight oh five PM. No decisions were made, no votes were taken.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next item, possible action on the items discussed in executive session. Is there anything with the council? Seeing none, uh, next item on agenda is council request. Seeing and hearing none. What is councils of? Ladies or gentlemen?
She's new adjourned.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Craylon, a second from Mr. Mattney, no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at eight oh six. Thank you, everybody.